Welcome, everybody. It is December 18th, 2018 at 6:33 PM. We're here for a regular business meeting of the Laramie City Council. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Can I please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Gabriel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Polikas.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Stoner.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
That's nine present and zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. So, the next item on our agenda is going to be proclamations and presentations, and we have a couple tonight. So, the first thing we're going to do is start off with a proclamation regarding the work that was done for the 150th anniversary year this year. It was a busy year. If you were out in the community, you saw that there were lots of events, Parks and Recs-related events. I know most of our Park and Rec staff is here tonight. And it was just a tremendous job done. Tourism did a wonderful job. Everybody that was at the table, there's quite a few. So, whereas, Laramie was originally established as a railroad town in the mid-1860s to further the expansion of the Union Pacific Railroad, which reached Laramie on May 4th, 1868. And whereas, the city of Laramie was incorporated on January 13th, 1874. Whereas, the city of Laramie has a unique history, including an important role in women's suffrage, which included Wyoming's Women's First Woman to Vote in the general election on September 6th, 1870. And whereas, Laramie is the home of Wyoming's only four-year higher education institution, the University of Wyoming, in case you didn't know, established in 1886. And whereas, 2018 was a year of celebration, recognizing our accomplishments and growth as a community, celebrating those who have come before us and what the future may hold. And whereas, council approved and passed a resolution on September 19th, 2017, to establish an ad hoc subcommittee of the Laramie City Council to work with Laramie community partners in planning and coordination of the 150th anniversary celebrations in 2018. Whereas, the celebration was kicked off with a reception held on May 4th at the Wyoming Territorial Prison State Historical Site, along with more events scheduled throughout the year, including art and historical exhibits, walking and bike tours of historical sites, Laramie Jubilee Days, wrapping up with the Tree Light Ceremony, and not to mention Governor Mead including signing a special proclamation for the city of Laramie. Whereas, the council would like to thank the 150th Executive Committee, the 150th Kickoff Event Committee, the 150th Grassroots Committee, the 150th Railroad History Committee, the 150th Events and Activities Committee, and the 150th Marketing Committee. So, now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Andrea Somerville, acting as mayor and president of the governing body of the city of Laramie, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim December 18th, 2018, as a day to recognize the 150th Anniversary Committee and encourage residents to thank the committee for their hard work in helping celebrate the city of Laramie.
Thank you.
So, with that, I'd like to invite all of our members up and say a huge thank you.
Thank you. My name is -- thank you, Honorable Counsel and Mayor Somerville, for having here us today and honoring the 150th Steering Committee. Laramie's a great place, and so being able to celebrate it has been a wonderful opportunity, I think, for all of us. I think we had a really great time doing it. So, I'm Jessica Flock. I -- for this particular event, let me -- excuse me, I get my notes. I sort of wore my hat as the Wyoming History Day State Coordinator through the American Heritage Center and worked with lots of different people who I want to make sure that we recognize as we go along. So, in November 2017, we started planning for eight months' worth of activities to celebrate the arrival of the railroad, and we couldn't have done it without a lot of really wonderful volunteers and some of the people behind me, including Albany County Tourism Office, Mike Gray, City Parks and Rec, Todd Fizer and Devon Stadler, the Laramie Main Street Alliance, Trey Sherwood. The Albany County Public Library put on a summer reading event revolving around our 150th, thanks to Monica Owens, Mayor Somerville, the Alliance for Historic Wyoming and Rin Casco, Kim Viner and Jane Nelson of the Albany County Historical Society, Judy Knight of the Laramie Plains Museum, Renee at the Wyoming State Territorial Prison and State Park Site, and, like I said, many, many wonderful volunteers who dressed up in period clothing, thanks to some of Judy's efforts and the -- I forget the name of their company, right? The acting company of seniors who Jermaine St. John and them organized to come join us for lots of great walking tours. And I'm not sure if any, but I think it's just been great, and we appreciate all you guys' support. And we -- I don't know if I'll be live for the 200th, but if I am, I'm in for helping us and doing some of that as well, so.
Well, so, right now, we only have one copy of the proclamation, but we're going to make lots and get it out to everybody that helped.
Can we get a picture?
Absolutely.
Picture?
One up.
Should we hold up a picture of Joe?
Trey can stand in front of me, Todd can't. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, guys, very much for all of your hard work this year. And if you didn't learn something this year at any of those events, that would be pretty amazing, because there was lots of good stuff. All right, our next proclamation is going to be in recognition of a departing city employee who has done wonderful things for the city of Laramie in the five years that he has been here. So, whereas, Earl Smith has been the Public Works Director for the city of Laramie since 2013 and has contributed to his expertise to the projects that have passed through the department. Whereas, Earl has led the way to develop a water master plan, as well as initiated work to develop a wastewater master plan for the first time in 30 years. He has gone before councils to present his projects and survived to procure funding, submitted designs, and initiated work for the public works projects. And whereas, Earl has worked on the Public Works Service Center by identifying a site and ultimately procuring the former Wild Tech campus, then with a team of professionals has designed improvements for the site which are now ready for the bidding. And whereas, Earl has helped procure funding for the North Side Tank Project and initiated the design for that project. And Earl has led the effort to the betterment of all streets throughout the city, including those in West Laramie. So, now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Andrea Somerville, acting as the mayor and president of the governing body of the city of Laramie, do hereby proclaim December 18th, 2018, as a day of recognition for Earl Smith, and encourage residents and city staff to recognize the positive impact that Earl has brought to the department and the city at whole. So, I think this little proclamation doesn't even come too close to encompassing everything you've done for the city of Laramie. So, thank you very much, and we're going to be very sad to see you go.
I appreciate that. It's been a wonderful experience. I had the pleasure of working for a number of councils over the years. Many of you were a part of all of those councils, so it's been a terrific experience, a learning experience for me. I had the pleasure of working under Janine for all five and a half years, and I say she is a tremendous leader, tremendous city manager, and I have the utmost respect for her. I leave a lot of terrific staff members behind, but I'm looking forward to my new adventures. So, thank you very much.
Please come visit often and see your Public Works Center.
Oh, I plan on it.
Let me give you this, and you've made me cry already, and we're not even to the worst part of the evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Earl, can I get a picture of you with the council?
Yep.
We're just going to read all the proclamations from this particular proclamation.
James, can I hide you?
Intentionally hiding.
Okay, Earl. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, Earl.
Thanks.
Thanks for all the work, Earl.
So, with that, I'm going to hand it off to Counsel Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proclamation honoring our departing city council members. Whereas, the governing body of the city of Laramie adopts ordinances and resolutions as it seems appropriate for the orderly function of the municipality, and also establishes public policy and leadership objectives. And whereas, each of the nine Laramie residents elected to serve on the city council provide daily leadership and stewardship throughout the term of the office that contributes to a vibrant and prosperous future for current and future residents of the Jim City of the Plains. And whereas, council members also serve on a variety of local, state, and national boards and committees, collaborating with other leaders to solve emerging municipal and community challenges, including the Wyoming Association of Municipalities, along with the National League of Cities. And whereas, four members of the city council will conclude their official terms of public service as elected representatives of the city of Laramie on December 31st of 2018. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Counselor Gabriel, acting on behalf of the mayor, Andy Somerville, do hereby proclaim today, December 18th, 2018, a day of recognition and appreciation for the dedicated service of the following. The Honorable Klaus Hansen, representing Ward III, '03 to 2018. Klaus served as mayor and president of council from '07 to '08. The Honorable Dave Polikas, representing Ward II, 2011 through 2018. Dave served as mayor and president of council 2013 through 2016. The Honorable Andrea Somerville, representing Ward I, 2014 through 2018. And Andy served as mayor and president of the council from 2017 through 2018. Also, the Honorable Phoebe Stoner, representing Ward I, 2017 through 2018. Four departing members of our council.
Counsel, we have plaques of service for our four departing members. And if I could, I'd like to just share a little bit of information about some of the activities of these folks, because certainly, the public see you all sitting here on Tuesday evenings, but I think it's important that we all remember the extent of your service goes well beyond being in council chambers on Tuesday. So, I'd like to start with you, Phoebe. Phoebe Stoner's the newest member of our council. She's had -- unfortunately, we've had a very short period of time with you. You've done a fantastic job. You have served on boards and commissions representing the city council, including the Planning Commission, the Monolith Ranch Advisory Committee, and the Beardification Committee. Thank you very much. On to our current mayor, Andy Somerville. Andy has participated in city boards and commissions as a council member, including the Civil Service Commission, the Main Street Alliance, Downtown Development Authority, the Laramie Regional Airport Joint Powers Board, and the Ad Hoc Liquor Committee. And I'm going to beg forgiveness now if I've missed anybody's credentials anywhere. I did my best, but some of you have a long list. Also, Counselor Somerville has participated extensively in our state association, serving on the Board of Directors for the Wyoming Association of Municipalities, has chaired the Municipalities Association Legislative Leadership Committee, and also served as a regional director for Region One. And at the national level, Mayor Somerville has attended the National League of Conference on multiple occasions, participating in subcommittees, including the Energy, Environmental, and Natural Resources Committee, the University Community Steering Committee, and the Energy Environment -- oh, I'm sorry, I have that one twice, Energy, Environment, and Natural Resource Committee. Thank you so much. We appreciate your leadership in the community more than you know, and certainly as well your participation on state and national boards representing our city. Now, we move to Councilmember Polikas. Many of you know Dave's been a resident of Laramie for years and years, and his service to the city started long before running for city council. I think that was just a natural outcome of all of your other activities. So, I'm going to start with city boards and commissions. As a council representative, Dave Polikas has served on the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance, the Civil Service Commission, the Urban Systems Advisory Commission, and the Downtown Development Authority. Prior to coming on council, however, I believe you were also a liaison to Planning Commission as a counselor, but prior to your council term, you served on the Planning Commission for 12 years, and six of those chaired the commission. You, as a counselor, served on the Local Emergency Planning Committee for four years. Prior to council, you were on the Building Code Board of Appeals for 20 years, and then also participated as a counselor on the Economic Development Joint Powers Board and the Albany County Campus LCCC Advisory Committee. Nationally, you've also attended National League of Cities, participating in the Small Cities Subcommittee, and at the county and regional level, served on the District Board for the Southeast Wyoming Economic Development District. Counselor Dave Polikas. This will keep us from starting our meeting for a while. Last but not least, Counselor Klaus Hansen. As we know, Counselor Hansen has served multiple terms for the city of Laramie. At a county and regional level, served on the Community Services Block Committee and on the WICI Commission on Higher Education for eight years. The state level, served on the WHAM Board. Counselor Hansen has never missed a WHAM meeting in 16 years.
True.
And those meetings are held all over the state, so this is why I say the work you all do is so much beyond what happens in these chambers. Also, served on the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality Water Wastewater Advisory Group for eight years, and the Air Quality Advisory Board for eight years. Nationally, represented -- or, excuse me, Counselor Hansen, served on the National League of Cities Board for two terms, and was the only representative from Wyoming to serve in decades. Chaired the Small Cities Subcommittee, and in fact, hosted that committee here in Laramie. What was that, about eight years ago?
Something like that.
We took them to -- all over town, they had a great time. And also, served on the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee for 16 years. That committee was part of the equation that got the improvements made to South Highway 287, following the tragic accident there in 2001. Also, city boards and commissions. Counselor Hansen is serving actively now on the Ad Hoc Liquor Committee, has been on the Disabilities Commission for 15 years, Finance Committee 12, Traffic Commission 4, and the Tourism Board for 2.
Something like that.
And perhaps, Counselor Hansen's most important role is serving as Santa Claus at our city's holiday celebration for at least 10 years.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have a couple parting gifts. The clerk has Christmas tree ornaments. 'Tis the season that commemorate the 150th anniversary of the city. That is a novel part of your service, that you were able to serve during our sesquicentennial. And also, Todd Fizer would like to talk to you a little bit about the T-shirts we gave you, and maybe explain why we've offered those as parting gifts as well.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, it's a pleasure to be here and to visit with you, also to thank the four of you for your service, but Klaus has been an instrumental piece of my life for the past three years. He comes into my facility and visits with me, and he cares about everything he does. In getting to know Klaus, one of his slogans was "Dare to Care." And we thought, Janine, myself, other staff, thought, what a fantastic slogan for anybody who's picked up the public gauntlet, whether you're an elected official, you've chosen to become a municipal employee, even if you come in and you attend at a council meeting and you're just public participating. And I shouldn't say just public, if you come as a public participant, it means you dare to care. And what a fantastic moniker for you to take on, carry on in your lives, and have people continue to care for this community, the residents of it, and how it functions.
Thank you.
So, we really appreciate that.
We had a request from the public to have an opportunity to express appreciation at this time, and it is certainly well deserved. So, I'm going to ask Dr. Reverend Sally Palmer if she'd like to address you now.
And your guests, please come up. Yes.
I am Sally Palmer, and I've stood before you usually under controversies, but I come here tonight with the Interfaith Council that was formed after 9/11. And we've been operated for that. There's a peace garden outside of the county courthouse, so I, again, will be very brief, but you, Andy, have been a beacon of light to us. So, this is a Our Lady of Good Will painting candle I want to give to you, because you have stood out in interfaith walks of those things that give us hope. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Honoring my two minutes, this 16-year counselor, I'm going to give you this plaque, Klaus, and read part of it to keep the time limit, but it's beyond words, but also is an incred -- sorry, but you stood for so much goodwill around the whole world, but this is a Salvador Dali painting, and what Dali tried to do was to say, "The Spirit of God is beyond boundaries," so you can't even see the head of Jesus here. But here's the proclamation from us on the Interfaith Council to you.
Thank you so much.
No, thank God for you.
Thank you. By the way, I'm just the guy on the left.
So, I'm a member of the Jewish community and the Unification Church, represent the Interfaith Council, and I would love to read this proclamation. "In recognition of Klaus Hansen, Ambassador of Goodwill, whereas Klaus Hansen has served on the city council of Laramie for over 16 years, and whereas he supported direct actions to assist interfaith good Samaritan and other organizations that help those in need, and whereas he has offered consistent vision for peacemaking and tolerance for diversity around the world. Therefore, be it affirmed that Klaus Hansen is hereby designated as Ambassador of Goodwill for Laramie, Wyoming, USA, in honoring his 16 years of supporting diversity, his history of giving voice to the voiceless, his ability to address complex issues with compassion, and his persistent ability to seek a bridge of understanding. Therefore, we offer gratitude to our local leader who bears witness to the humanity of us all."
Thank you.
You guys take a picture?
Come here, come here. Shall we all stand together? Yeah, why don't we?
Sure, guys are a team. I don't know how you do it. You stay up late, lots of paperwork.
Excuse me. Sorry. I want to be in the picture. You're giving -- That's okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Palmer.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sally.
All right. We probably should have done that at the end of the meeting, not the beginning of the meeting. All right. So, let's go on and move on down the agenda. We don't have any public hearings. City Manager, do we have any announcements tonight?
We have an announcement from Parks and Recreation.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, as part of our holiday celebration, don't forget that we're hosting Skate with Santa with the Friends of Community Recreation on Saturday, the 22nd, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the Ison Event Center. The event is free, the children get a free toy, and there's refreshment served, so make sure, let everybody know, come on out and enjoy Skate with Santa.
And to the public, Santa skates pretty well, as my kids in the back can testify to. All right, on to disclosures. Do we have any disclosures by city council members on any items tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the agenda. Vice Mayor.
Okay. There are no changes to the agenda this evening, so I move that the agenda be set as submitted.
Do we have a second? Second. Second by Counsel Stoner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that carries. Vice Mayor.
Okay, I move that the consent agenda be approved, and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Gabriel. City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Onto the regular agenda. Item number 10, Counsel Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution amending the Parks and Recreation Department master fee schedule. I would move that the council approve Resolution 2018-73, amending the Parks and Recreation Department master fee schedule, as indicated, and Attachment A with an effective date of May 1st, 2019. An authorized mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Ms. Garrett, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll try to be brief, and then if you have questions about the specifics of it, ask those. The cover sheet list, item 1 through 8, these are the kind of overview, there's a little -- there's some other little details in the actual, the color pages that you have that are the actual master fee, but some of the highlights, we've removed several pages this year that are the activities that we conduct at the recreation center, primarily so that we can conduct them in a more businesslike fashion. Activities change from season to season in terms of the contact hours and the supplies that we may provide, and we wanted to be able to do that and make sure that our costs were appropriate. Still, our youth programs, of course, are going to be the things that we subsidize the most. Adult programs are expected to break even. Very few things do we actually generate additional revenue from, but those help offset the cost of those things that don't generate revenue. We've also added a young adult category to our memberships at the Laramie Recreation Center. We were trying to hit a market that we don't see a lot of members from right now, people who may have graduated from college, they've got the first job, not high income, and we thought this might be a good way to start getting them accustomed to coming to the rec center, so you'll see that reflected. SAC fees are adjusting slightly, the school age childcare program. We haven't adjusted fees, and I actually didn't go back and look to see when the last time was we adjusted them, but I think it may have been at least four years ago, and it wasn't so much an adjustment as it was a restructuring. So, we are adjusting. We checked to see what the other local providers were doing in the community, and we are still very affordable when you look at us comparatively speaking. And you may remember that when we started doing the school age childcare at the recreation center, we felt it was important to make sure that we weren't undercutting other daycares in town, because we do function to some degree as a daycare. We are a recreation program first and foremost, but we acknowledge that we have some place in that daycare market. Gym rentals are basically coming to parity with our rooms, just so that everything's consistent. A room, a gym, are the same rental fee. You'll see the pool and the inflatable rates have been streamlined. We used to have three different fees, depending on how many people you were going to have. I think that the original intent probably was that if you were going to have a really big event, it might cost more. The tendency really is to have kind of a middle group. It's usually 50 to 100 people. Sometimes birthday parties, which are in a party package, are smaller, but we felt like it might just make sense to make it kind of just the same fee across the board. They are required to rent half the pool when they rent the inflatable, so those two costs do marry up, so that's what that's about. We also, at the Ison Event Center, added a bulk purchase option for punch passes. You may know that we don't have memberships as such at the Ison Event Center because of the seasonality of the business, but occasionally, we'll have groups come or, you know, kids come into town to visit grandparents over the holiday, they have to buy a group of passes. And actually, this was Devon Stalder's idea. If we could sell them in increments of 20 for not quite as big a discount as if it's for one person as a regular punch pass, but a little bit of a discount, that might incentivize people to think of the Ison Event Center as a place that they can bring the family for, you know, the whole holiday. So, that's an option. We've also incorporated skate rental into one of our multi-pass options. idea. If we could sell them in increments of 20 for not quite as big a discount as if it's for one person as a regular punch pass, but a little bit of a discount, that might incentivize people to think of the Ison Event Center as a place that they can bring the family for, you know, the whole holiday. So that's an option. We've also incorporated skate rental into one of our multi-pass options. There's no additional discount. It just puts it in the, in the fee schedule. And then we are increasing or proposing to increase our primetime ice rates just a little bit. And of course, the intention here is, over time, our user groups will eventually see a slight increase as well, just to get us a little closer to market. So we're still pretty affordable rates. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or clarify anything.
Questions? Councilor Hansen?
Thank you, Jody. Just one question. What does a party host do and, and for $25? And can they invite gazillions of people? Or how does this work? I would do that rather than do a birthday party, which costs me $150, and do the party host and invite 50 people.
Honorable mayor and council, you can't actually rent a party host without the party. It's, it's considered an add-on. Some parties, people would like to have somebody to host games and activities. It's not a common occurrence, but we do have that request occasionally, like if parents don't ice skate, and they'd like to, you know, have somebody there to play games with them. So that's what the option is for.
Oh, okay. I was confused. Thank you.
Yeah. Can't do, can't do one without the other.
Thank you.
Other questions?
So I have a quick one, and it's in regards to adding the ICE access to a fitness pass. I know this comes up every year, right? Do we see a future for potentially being able to add just access for that, how, what is it, eight months or so, nine months that the ICE is open, onto an annual membership at any time in the future?
Mayor Somerville, council, if I can figure out how to do it and make it work so that it doesn't diminish our revenue, I would love to have it. Part of the struggle I've had is, right now, the structure is such that people who want to use the, the Ison Event Center regularly are buying a multi-pass. And the multi-pass is discounted. It's not an add-on to a rec center pass, though. And so it's all about trying to figure out, can we do this and make it a, a good cash flow situation, as well as a good incentive for our members? Because I'd love to be able to do that. I just haven't quite figured out the structure. So if anybody has great ideas on how this might work, talk to me, because I would, I would do some work on this.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, back to discussion. Any comments, questions, thoughts from council on this? All right, city clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Hansen?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, your honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. On to item number 11, Councilor Schuster.
Thank you. The title of this is Resolution 2018-78, supporting the submission of an application to the Wyoming Department of State Parks and Cultural Resources for a 2019 Land and Water Conservation Fund grant not, in the amount not to exceed $250,000 for the implementation of the Scout Park Development Plan. I move that council approve Resolution 2018-78, supporting the submission of an application to the Wyoming Department of State Parks and Cultural Resources for a 2019 Land and Water Conservation Fund grant in the amount not to exceed $250,000 for the implementation of the Scout Park Development Plan, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilor Stoner.
Honorable mayor, city council, Todd Feizer, Director of Parks and Recreation. This is the return to Scout Park. If I can turn you back, a few months ago, we returned some of the Land and Water Conservation Fund grants that have been awarded to Scout Park due to financial hardship. With the recent passage of the specific purpose optional sales tax in August of 2018, it's provided the secure funding to move forward with that project now and to reapply for that grant opportunity. We are applying for $250,000. That should provide for in-path parkways, two-to-five-year-old playground, a five-to-12-year-old playground, restroom, and hopefully a shelter, irrigation improvements, tree movements, and just regular cleaning up and making that park into a neighborhood park for us. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any, and look forward to your approval.
Does council have any questions? Go ahead, Councilor Hansen.
Thank you. Just one question. The Disabilities Commission, of course, has been very hot on the trail of a disabilities-oriented playground. This isn't it. I just want you to remember not to forget about the Disabilities Playground, which is supposed to come in which park?
Honorable mayor, through you, through Councilor Hansen, the planning of that potential amenity is in the infancy stages. Park location hasn't been selected, and we'll have to work with future councils on how that prioritizes as a capital improvement plan. However it is, it's a high priority of mine as a Parks and Recreation Director to have something like that in our, in our facilities.
I, I will come to hound you.
Okay.
I think he's saying he'll still see you on a daily basis.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Thoughts, discussion by council on this item? City clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Stoner?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, your honor.
All right. Thank you very much. The motion carries. On to item number 12, Councilor Stoner.
Thanks, mayor. I move that council approve an agreement for professional services between the city of Laramie, Wyoming, and Tyler Technologies Incorporated for software, data conversion, project management, training, licensing, and maintenance fees in the amount of one-time fees of $1,209,349, and then yearly maintenance fees of $168,417 in fiscal year 2020 through fiscal year 2024, and amend the budget to reflect the actual project cost of $1,388,949, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by the vice mayor. Chief?
Mayor and council, city and county jointly purchased a, the last computer-aided records management, fire EMS, jails, and mobile software system in 2001 at the cost of just under $1 million. It's served us well over the past 17 years. About two years ago, our vendor, then Superioron and now Central Square, notified us that there would be no further enhancements to our software platform. Then earlier last year, they informed us that support for our software could only be insured through 2020, so about another year, two years. Because of these factors, in January of 18, we started to consider new solutions for our integrated public safety software systems. In 18, we had two vendors demonstrate their solutions onsite. Superioron, now Central Square, demonstrated a platform called One Solution. Tyler Technologies demonstrated their public safety software suite as well. In September, we issued an RFQ for the Integrated Public Safety Software Solution. We received three proposals, Tyler Technologies, N4, and Zircher Technologies. Superioron did not propose the One Solution option, but instead proposed Zircher, whom they had recently acquired in a merger. P.S.A. Administrator Steve Morgan had seen a Zircher demonstration at a training conference earlier this year, so we were familiar with that product. We were not familiar with N4. In November, an internal team consisting of myself, P.S.A. Administrator Morgan, records personnel, dispatch personnel, fire department personnel, and PD personnel scored the proposals on a 70-point scale. After scoring, a meeting was held to discuss the merits of each proposal and to rank them. Tyler Technologies was the choice of the internal team from scores and in the discussions at the meeting. The pricing proposal was then opened, and it was determined that we would commence negotiations with Tyler in an attempt to bring the proposal to a mutually agreed-upon price point. What is before you tonight is a project cost that was over what we had originally considered, but one that includes software and services, primarily data conversion costs, that were not considered in the 17 when we proposed our initial budget of $700,000. In discussion with Malia Brown, we believe that the proposed costs are both reasonable initially, as well as in the long term, which is a critically important part. What Tyler has proposed is a millennial leap in technology compared to what we currently have. We have assurances from Tyler, both verbally and contractually, that we will never pay for upgrades to our system if they migrate to a more advanced platform. When I explained the One Solution from Superioron, that was the same vendor we currently have. Superioron wanted to charge us in the neighborhood of $1 million to convert from our existing 400 platform over to their newest platform. So the assurance that Tyler would never charge us for new platform migrations is a critical piece of this puzzle. What we will pay for on a yearly basis is maintenance and support, which is what we have paid to our current vendor for the past 17 years. Those costs will be higher, but not unreasonably so, and they're reflected on the cover sheet. Another important part of this is, we did negotiate that those costs will not increase for a five-year period. As originally proposed, those would have a, a yearly increase at certain percentage levels. And so over the course of five years, we'll save additional money by not having those built-in maintenance support contract increases. We have existing budget to purchase all related contractual services, training, and travel and living expenses related to the project. We intend to lease purchase the software and hardware, and Malia Brown will address that in the next agenda item if council approves this item. The entire project is being paid for with E901 funds and not general fund monies. I'd answer any questions, and we have Tyler representatives Nicolette Schmitz and Rob Simmons in attendance tonight if you have questions for them.
Questions? Councilor Hansen?
Thank you, honor. I don't know whether I should ask it now or with item number 13, because it pertains to budget. I just have the question, the 13, $1,388, that's the total package, right? We have $700,000 currently budgeted. I just want to know, over what kind of time period are we trying to take care of the rest? Because it includes, of course, upgrades and whatever, wanderings, et cetera. So what kind of timeframe are we looking at?
The breakout is essentially, what we have, what the lease cannot pay for is the contractual services, travel, training, living expenses.
Yeah.
So that amount, as their build, is 655, 628. The rest of the project will be done under the lease purchase, which will be over a five-year period, and we'll pay that on a yearly basis. So we'll pay initially for the contractual services, and then over the five-year period, the lease-purchased amount. And, and Malia will address that, those costs in the next agenda.
Well, then I, I have a procedural question.
Sure.
Since I'm going off council, can I obligate future councils to do this kind of thing?
My, Councilor Hansen, my answer would be yes, because we do it all the time with lease purchases. We are authorizing the purchase now, which is, yeah.
For the future? Okay.
Director Brown, did you want to add?
Not overstepping my authority.
Yeah, I know, I know we have an item after this to discuss
Yeah.
the financing in more detail, but did you want to add anything?
Yes, and mayor and council Hansen, in all lease agreements, there's an, there's not, there's an obligation clause not to be obligated. So the leaser lesser knows that you're not obligating for this, and we have to appropriate every year. So it's in a contract, it's in a contractual language in the lease.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Schuster?
Thank you. I know what it is, but could you please explain where we get the 9/11 funds?
Every single month, for every cellphone record in the county and every hardline record in the county, we collect 75 cents. That goes directly to a dedicated interest-bearing account that the city manages that is for exactly four projects like that.
That's why I want, you said it wouldn't be, not affect general funds. So I wanted it stated that this will be, every person that has a cellphone or landline their house is contributing to pay for this. And it's very, very much the, there's very, a huge amount of rules on it, what it can contribute to and what it cannot contribute to, because it cannot be used in any general fund type thing. Only projects like this. It bought our stations, our 9/11 stations. When people call 911, it bought those stations that are in the emergency center and things like that. So this has very, very special rules of what it could apply to. Thank you.
Councilor Gabriel?
Thank you, mayor. Chief Stalder and I go back a number of years when I was a county commissioner, and we've talked about software for a lot of years. And I was just curious, what kind of role will the county play in payment for this system?
Mayor and Councilor Gabriel, the, the initial project is being paid for in full by the E901 fund monies. Currently, in the LARQ budget, there's approximately $90,000 that is budgeted inside the general fund of the LARQ budget that goes to our current vendors for maintenance and support. That figure will go up to that 169 or so, and that will be put over into the LARQ budget and paid for in, under the 80/20 split with general fund monies. So that's why I wanted to point out that the, the maintenance and support will increase. The part that I didn't explain is, there's another piece called software as a service, which it will also support, which is a hosted service that will support. That, that software as a service piece of the package goes entirely to support the detention center operation, as well as both the county and city attorney prosecutor modules. So, but that's rolled into that 169. It's not a broken-out piece. So for the software as a service, and yearly maintenance and support, and upgrades, and PTFs, and all the other stuff that goes along with it, it's that 169 that'll be budgeted after year one of the project. So in the next year, you'll just have what you see now in the LARQ budget for maintenance for Superioron slash Central Square. In 2020, that will shift.
Is there any further negotiations required with the county on this new software?
Mayor and Councilor Gabriel, no. We've had sheriffs-to-office personnel were involved in the R and D in this project, as was the county attorney. It's seamless, and it'll be budgeted just like we have it now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilor McKinney?
The old company that we're with now, they wanted a $1 million upgrade to get us to where we should be. Or is this company going to come in after 17 years, and they're going to ask for a $1 million upgrade?
Mayor, Councilor McKinney, no. That's why I wanted to explain that contractual clause. And we, we did have extensive discussions with Tyler during our research and development for this project. They've assured us that any platform migration, so what you get with yearly maintenance is yearly enhancements to the project, or to the, to the software. What happened was, we're on an AS400 platform, and Superioron made the decision after these 17 years that that was probably not a viable platform, and they wanted everybody to migrate over to the One Solution, which is PC-based. They were going to charge us that money. Tyler has assured us contractually that that will never occur.
So when the, after the five years, the maintenance fees, they're going to go up by a percentage?
After five years, which was negotiated, sorry, Mayor and Councilor McKinney, after five years, there could be a, an increase up to 4% in those maintenance fees.
Of the, of the 168, 417 a year?
Yes. That was an important negotiation point, because as the proposal came to us, there was 4% per year after year one. So we believe that we're saving money over the first five years, and at that point in time, the potential is there for 4%. What I will tell you is that with Superioron, that has been variable over the last 17 years. In some years, they increase it by five, in some... In some years, they increase it by five, in some years, they don't, some years, it's three. It's up to our vendor, um, but
As to when they raise it?
Contractually, they've indicated that they won't raise it more than four percent per year in year six of the maintenance.
And then they don't feel, they don't feel that it's ever gonna, it, it, it could potentially go for twenty, thirty, forty years? I mean, the technology, their technology is gonna just keep growing and getting bigger and better?
Uh, it, it's actually a valid question, Mayor and Counselor McKinney. Right now, today, the, the records management software that Tyler offers is not what we will be receiving. They're currently on, uh, what they refer to as a legacy RMS. By the time we implement within the next, uh, twelve to eighteen months, we will be on an entirely new platform, uh, called Enterprise Records. The potential always exists with technological advances for these forklift migrations into a new platform. They've assured us contractually that we would never pay for those, those forklift migrations. And obviously, in the year-to-year migration, our enhancements, we won't, we won't pay for those.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, I have one more question, and that is, I read in the title, of course, that this will be shared also by the Albany County Sheriff's Office and the Albany County Attorney's Office. Uh, are they cost-sharing with the county in this project, or are we doing this all by ourselves?
Mayor and Counselor Hanson, um, the cost-sharing comes after year one. Initially, this is being paid for entirely with E-911 funds, which come into the county as a whole for the county and the city through LARQ to expend as we deem necessary with those legislative restrictions. After year one, when maintenance kicks in, that maintenance and support piece will be into the LARQ contract under the existing eighty-twenty split between the city and the county.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have one quick one for you, Chief. So we're embarking, uh, as a city, starting this year, on a pretty major software overhaul for the entire city, basically changing out our core operating system. Obviously, we don't know what company or what software we'll end up with then. Are there any concerns about bridging this new software, and has that been discussed at all?
Uh, Mayor and Council, one of the good things is that, uh, last month, early last month, council approved a contract between Tyler Technologies and the City of Laramie to replace our existing municipal court software. Our public safety software will interface splendidly with that, which it doesn't now, but it'll interface perfectly with that. The public safety software needs to talk to the court software. We don't talk to all the other financial software.
That was my question, was the financial?
It's almost regardless to us what finance goes with for their solution to replace their, all of their financial stuff.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? We'll talk a little bit about the financing in just a second, but, thank you, Chief. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, so none, discussion, comments, thoughts from council on this item? City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Plakus?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Do you want to ask the public, does anyone want to comment?
I did, I did, yep. That motion carries. Uh, moving on to item number thirteen. Counselor Stoner?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I move to approve a lease purchase agreement between the City of Laramie and Wyoming Bank and Trust to lease with an option to purchase the software and hardware acquisitions related to the public safety contract with Tyler Technologies Incorporated and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gabriel. Director Brown?
Hi, Mayor, just a short summary, since we've heard the whole, uh, synopsis by Dell. But basically, um, what we're doing is in the, the, um, E-911 fund has quite a bit of money in it. We, uh, however, you want to make sure that you have equipment repair and things like that. So we're looking at lease purchase, that this lease purchase will actually, the principles and payments will be coming out of the E-911 fund also, so it's not hitting the general fund. Uh, basically, we'll be funding about six hundred and sixteen thousand in lease, one-time software, the third-party software, and the hardware that is following this purchase. This is kind of a, not a normal lease. Uh, we kind of went through Todd at Kaiser and Company, we work with certain banks. Basically, the lease is at a three-and-a-half percent rate. It's got over five years, because they only support a five-year lease, because of the life of, uh, hardware. And so basically, it needed to start this year in case we want to do SPT bonding next year, because I only have a ten million qualified bank loan, and banks want to make sure you, you, they get that, uh, benefit. So it kind of was something I had to do quickly in order to get it into this year. So basically, that's what the lease is about. I don't know if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer anything.
Does anybody have any questions pertaining to the financing? Okay, seems simple enough. All right, is there any comments from the public on this item? And I apologize, on the last item, I just, I forgot to ask the representatives of Tyler if they had anything pertinent to share or wanted to speak to the council. We already passed it, but
You're asking for us?
Yeah, do you have anything that you want to say? You don't have to, but
Well, I'll just
You did, you did come out tonight, you're hanging out, so
Counsel, I'm Rob Simons, I am the Sales Director in the West for Tyler Technologies and, and joined here by Nicolette Schmitz. We've had a wonderful time over the past twelve months or so, visiting Laramie and working with the team on the public safety side. And we just want to thank you for, uh, the confidence you've shown in the solution that we will provide to the city and, and the county.
Sounds great. Thank you for coming tonight, appreciate it.
My pleasure.
All right, no public comments, back to council. Any discussion, thoughts, comments on the financing? Counselor Schuster?
Thank you, Malia, you do great for us, you searched down in the best available ways, and thank you very much for that.
Any other thoughts? All right, City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Schuster?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Plakus?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. All right, on to item number fourteen, Counselor Hanson.
Yes, and I'm behind again.
Run it, I got it, there you go.
Okay, uh, I move that council approve Resolution Number Two, two thousand and ten dash thirteen of the Laramie City Council authorizing the use of the one percent specific purpose tax earmarked one million dollars for the protection of wellhead properties in Zone One of the aquifer recharge protection area and lands containing vulnerable features in Zone Two as defined in the two thousand and eight Casper Aquifer Protection Plan, including land acquisition.
Wait a second?
And I move to approve the contract for sale and purchase, uh, of real property between City and, uh, Mike Incorporated and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign. Yeah.
Thank you, do we have a second?
But, yeah, it was good that we read the rest, because the, the motion is very short, anyway.
All right, so we, a motion, a second by the Vice Mayor? City Manager?
Um, Mayor and Council, uh, staff have negotiated contract for sale, um, to purchase, uh, property in the amount of about three point three acres. Uh, this property is located east of Grand Avenue, between Morden Drive to the north and Bill Nine to the south. You have a visual on your screen. Uh, the lot is contiguous to the western boundary of our newest park, which is the Imperial Heights Park. Uh, this land is in aquifer protection Zone Two, which means that it is at, uh, moderate to high risk for aquifer protection if the land were to be developed. Uh, Counselor Hanson noted the administrative or policy goal that drives, um, this item being in front of you tonight, which of course is the, um, placement on the ballot and ultimate approval of the voters, uh, funding from the two thousand and ten, not the newly renewed specific purpose tax, but the old specific purpose tax, uh, approved by the voters in two thousand and ten. Uh, that tax allowed for, uh, monies to be accrued to purchase aquifer-sensitive properties so that they would not be developed and thereby not potentially cause harm to water quality in the aquifer. Um, the lot to be purchased is at a price of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, that's roughly the appraised value. Uh, City Attorney Bob Southers negotiated the contract with the other party. If you have any contractual questions, he can answer those. If you have any substantive questions regarding the findings of the site-specific investigation of this property, uh, we also have Water Resource Administrator Darren Parkin here, or I, or I might be able to help you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Questions on this item?
I have one.
Counselor Plakus?
The, uh, appraised value?
Yes.
It, what is, the, what is it based upon? Is it based upon, uh, a developed, uh, residential housing? Is it based on commercial, is it based on open space?
Uh, Mayor and Council, the appraisal did take into account the zoning of the lots, which is R1, as you know, um, from the cover sheet. It also did, um, identify that open space could be a use for this, but it certainly did account for the commercial, um, availability of developing this as it is zoned for residential.
So they, they appraised it on the highest and best use would be residential?
Um, they took into account R1 zoning, um, but I don't believe that they appraised it solely on that factor. They also noted that it was aquifer-sensitive, that there would be, um, regulatory issues that would come up because of the vulnerable features on the property, and so I believe there was a discount. I would say they didn't, the, how do I say that? The appraisal took these things into account. There is no monetary quantitative discount applied, but I can assume the appraiser took that into account, because they acknowledge it in the preamble of the appraisal, that the property has constraints and would be a higher development cost than other R1 properties. Did that make more sense?
Yes.
Did they get that out well?
Yes.
Or sort of well?
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Mr. Parkin, did you have anything to add to this? Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Okay, back to council, questions, bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Parkin.
Yep.
I do have a question for you.
Go ahead.
Um, thanks, Mayor. Of the one thousand dollars earmarked from the SPT, what percentage have we used thus far? One million? Sorry.
I knew you were missing the last three zeros, we knew what you meant.
Yeah.
Um, very little, in fact. Um, we did not bond that money, uh, from the two thousand and ten approval, so we've allowed it to accrue slowly over time. Malia, I don't think we spent really anything substantial. Yeah, like sixty thousand.
Okay, great.
Counselor Plakus?
And I don't know who to ask, ask this question to, or whether, whether there is, even is an answer, but, um, is this lot, is this lot a buildable lot? Is it, is someone capable of building a single-family residence on it? Or is it because of, or is it because of the, uh, physical features and so forth, in essence, unbuildable?
If you don't mind, Mayor and Counselor Mayor Plakus, I'd like Darren to maybe talk to you about the site-specific investigation and the findings of that with respect to the vulnerable features. I'm of the opinion that the lot has some development potential if a private party wished to develop it, but those vulnerable features would have to be accommodated for. So it would be a little more complicated than building on, on a, you know, and on, uh, than building on a property without vulnerable features. But we had our site-specific investigation done, and as you know, the process is to then have a second geologist peer review it. Darren also, as a matter of his, um, job duties, reviews those as well and makes recommendations to us. So he can tell you what vulnerable features would have to be accommodated on that lot if development were to occur.
So a follow-up to that question would be, has anybody done an analysis as to, as to the additional costs that would be involved to put a residential, uh, building on that lot? In other words, it, it goes into the feasibility of someone being able to build on the lot?
Yeah, and I, I see your point very well. Um, to my knowledge, no, now the developer, excuse me, not the developer in this case, the owner, Mike Inc., they may have some data like that, but we certainly haven't done any investigations of that nature, other than to identify the vulnerable features there, which we would then, if they gave us a development proposal, we would require them to work around, um, in a, in a fashion that would protect the aquifer. So Darren, do you want to add anything? You want to give a summary of the vulnerable features on this lot? Thank you.
See, I know you'd end up up here anyways.
Honorable Mayor, Counselor Plakus, good evening. Um, this particular lot has two very significant vulnerable features. Uh, one is an ephemeral drainage that runs through the northern portion of it. Uh, the other is the Sherman Hills Fault Zone, which is a very wide fault zone that comes right through, bisects the property. Uh, and there's kind of a third concern with it, and that is the lack of a satanica shale cap, uh, over the Casper Aquifer in this location. Um, as far as the build, buildability of this lot, uh, in the appraisal, it really pointed out, and in the site-specific investigations, that only the southern portion of the lot was probably viable for building, um, due to the variances that would be required and setbacks from the vulnerable features in the northern part of the lot. Uh, the appraisal did assign, uh, open space as probably the best and, and most highest use of this property.
Counselor Plakus, go ahead.
The one, just one follow-up question. So the southern proportion that was identified as buildable, what type of, what type of size are we looking at? Are we looking at a very small amount, are we looking at something that is a hundred by a hundred?
Uh, Counselor Plakus, I don't exactly know. It was, it was limited residential in the southern portion, but I do not know the sizes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Schuster?
Uh, that was half my question, the other part is, is this inside the city limits or outside the city limits?
Counselor Schuster, it is inside the city limits.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? All right, we already asked for public comment, but I'll ask again. Okay, any comments or thoughts from council members? City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Plakus?
No.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
No.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's seven yeses and two noes, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. On to item number fifteen, Counselor McKinney.
I move to approve the contract for sale and purchase the real property between City and Wyoming Diamond Boulder Drive LLC. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Second? Second by the Vice Mayor? City Manager?
Um, Council, this is, uh, similar to the prior item. Um, the city has negotiated a purchase contract for these lands, and, sorry, let me get to the right cover sheet here. Um, these lands are located where Boulder Drive terminates on its northernmost end. Uh, the property includes, uh, land both on the east and the west side of Boulder Drive, which as you know, runs mostly north and south. Uh, there are two commercial B-two zoned lots, uh, that total nine point one acres. Um, this is in aquifer protection Zone Two. The site-specific investigation determined this land to be of very high risk, of a higher graded risk to the aquifer were it to be developed, due to the presence of multiple vulnerable features similar to the previous property, um, but also the proximity of this land to the city springs and Turner wells. Uh, the property to be purchased is slightly below appraisal at three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, again, the city attorney, uh, can address any specifics as to the terms of the agreement, and Darren Parkin is here, if you'd like a summary of the vulnerable features and why the wells in this, uh, close proximity to land are of concern.
City Manager, could you address, um, what I, the same questions as the last one, developability of the lots?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, this lot, these lots as well are, um, developable, uh, B-two zoning, business zoning. Um, you, if you've been up there, you'll see there has been previous excavations specifically on the eastern side of Boulder Drive. There's been grading done at some point in the past, not by this owner. In any case, we do believe the lands could be developed, um, and there is, um, no indication in the appraisal that some portion of the property, as in the previous property, say the south side or the east side, is more or less developable. However, there are constraints because of the vulnerable features, and the developer, if they, uh, presented us with a development proposal, would, would be required to accommodate for those vulnerable features as best they could. Um, Darren, if I've misstated anything or overstated, please correct me. Darren, if I've misstated or overstated, please correct me. So, yeah, they've taken that into account, certainly.
Questions for City Manager? Council Schuster.
Thanks, Mayor. I know that this is an informal but very popular recreational area, and...
A good way to put it.
I was wondering if you could speak to the current use of parking, how that relates to the health of the aquifer, and then if the purchase were to go forward, how we might deal with interfacing with the public.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Stoner, if you look at the larger of the two yellow boxes there, which is the east side of Boulder Drive, as you've mentioned, Councilor Stoner, that area at some time in the past was graded out, and it's a fairly flat sort of dirt surface. We are seeing a lot of folks using it as an informal parking area to access what will be the Pilot Hill lands, but also to get up to the state section, which right now has public access granted on it. Darren and I have talked about this actually, and I'm going to let him come up and say more if I don't say enough, but we certainly do have concern about the parking there. The vulnerability of this land, as it's been graded in both the Aquifer Protection Plan and through the site-specific investigations, is well documented, and it is pretty substantial. So it is very likely that parking on bare dirt there is not a type of use that we would like to encourage or see grow in any fashion, although does it make the most logical, seemingly obvious place for a trailhead? Yes, but vehicles with the chemicals and the oil and whatnot that come with them are just not permitted to park on unsurfaced areas, and this would be an area that the protection plan would say, would recommend against that use. So we're seeing that informal use. If we acquire this property, we may need to step in to make official the not allowing of parking there. So that won't be popular, but it is clearly laid out in the Aquifer Plan that it would be a measure that would be well taken at this point.
Go ahead.
Would there be any possibility of formalizing some parking kind of at the terminus of the Boulder, is that Boulder Drive?
It is, yeah.
There as an alternative?
Yeah, we talked about that a little bit, too. Certainly on-street parking, you know, maybe is less of an issue. To be fair, though, you know, the conversations that Darren and I have had have just been really internal staff, you know, kind of dealing with what is obviously kind of an issue that we're going to have to handle if we acquire the land. We haven't done any kind of full assessment of either on-street parking at the terminal end of Boulder, which kind of makes sense, but we would want to look at it. We want to make sure that if there was any, you know, oil leaks or whatnot, that that was going into an appropriate capture basin or sewer.
Okay. Other questions for the City Manager?
I guess, if that lot were to be paved, it would be a more possible use as a trailhead parking area?
Mayor, Councilmember Plakus, I think the answer is maybe. You know, when we have, as a city entity, when we have conducted any development in any areas where we know there's aquifer issues, especially if it's been zoned, if it's been categorized as a Zone 1 or 2 vulnerable area, we subject ourselves as an entity to the same rules and requirements that we would subject any other developer to. So for instance, they would have to go through a site-specific investigation if we were going to put a parking lot there in some kind of surface. We would have to develop a plan for that. We'd submit it for review in an aquifer area, and we would have to build to the requirements necessary to protect the aquifer. What we've seen in other developments that had similar, so I can't say specifically, but we would go through our process, just like we'd ask anyone else to. And one example that comes to mind is the car dealership just to the west of this property down Grand Avenue, Laramie Ford. They did some parking lot renovations and a minor renovation, and we went through that process. Also, Laramie Fitness that exists, or is it Laramie or Altitude there?
Altitude.
Yeah, Altitude Fitness, I apologize, that exists right now on the corner of Boulder and Grand. They built a parking lot, right? I believe that they had to engineer it such that runoff from that paved surface is captured and doesn't go trickle into the groundwater. And so I would guess that if we paved it, we would probably find ourselves doing the same thing. We would be paving, but we would have to capture all runoff to prevent it from going into the aquifer recharge area. But that's an assumption with no real engineering analysis behind it at this point. So that's why I said maybe. It is possible, but it could be, I guess, just to cut to the chase, it could be a pretty expensive parking lot.
So there's, if I may, there's also a parking area across, not too far from here, across the street from Walmart. It's an overflow sales area for, I believe it's Ford Motor Company.
They call it a store, Jerry, because I checked into this, because I wanted to see exactly what was going on. They did not call it an overflow lot. They call it a store, Jerry.
And it's, I believe it's not in the city limits. It's on the edge of the city limits, yet there's no regulation for it.
Yeah, you are correct. We almost see it on this map. Technically, the city limits exclude that dirt parking area or storage area or whatever it is. And so the county approved that, the city had no, you know, review or approval authority on that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Other questions for the City Manager?
I have a question for Darren, Mayor.
Okay, that's fine. Darren? If we can bug you again?
Thanks, Mayor. On the spectrum of importance, I'm just thinking about this as a game of proportions, and this is a pretty large chunk of that, the total amount that we have. Do you see this as very, like a very good opportunity for aquifer protection, or are we perhaps going to be in a situation in a year or two where there's a better opportunity for a more sensitive area, and we've already spent the funds down?
Honorable Mayor and Councilor Stoner, I would say when we did our evaluation at a staff level of potentially available properties in the APO that we could acquire, this one is number one. This is the highest priority and the highest risk to the aquifer of all of them that we identified. The only higher risk you're going to get is if you go inside the City Springs enclosure itself.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Darren?
Yeah. So when you evaluate it, you say it's a high risk. Is it a high risk as it stands now with a few cars parked on it? Or is it a high risk if someone were to build on it and go through the aquifer protection process and adhere to all the regulations? Is it still that same high risk?
Council Plakus, I think if you rely on engineering controls, I think you can build anywhere. I wouldn't say it's a, you couldn't build there. It's going to be expensive. There's three major vulnerable features there. The lot to the west is essentially just filled dirt. There's some thought that maybe the City Springs themselves are actually underneath that filled dirt. Anything, we've got the Corianic line, it's the toe of that. You've got the City Springs Fault going through here. The Casper Formation is exposed right at the surface with a bunch of faulting and fracturing. And pretty much any liquid that you introduce into the surface at this location is going in the ground, and if our wells are pumping, they're going in our wells. I mean, it's a very sensitive location, but is that mean you can't build it? Not necessarily. You know, if you engineered properly and if it made financial sense, you could build on this lot, yes.
So if it did make financial sense and they followed our policies, the risk would be very low?
Council Plakus, that depends on, I guess, that specific plan and your confidence in their engineering controls and mitigation that was offered.
I'm more directing it toward the confidence in our regulations and our ability to regulate in an effective way.
Yeah, Council Plakus, I believe on this particular lot especially, I think our regulations would be very thorough, and any building that took place there, I think would, we'd have to have a confidence level very high.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Parkin? Okay. Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item? Okay, seen none. Back to Council. Comments and thoughts? Council Schuster.
That property there has went through hell. Just going to state it, used to work within three blocks of that area. The original Walmart, which is now Snowy Range Academy, is the original building there. And they dynamited to that ground to build there, where now it is against the rules too. And the developer of that area originally took the back area when he heard that Walmart wanted to become a Super Walmart and figured that if he just leveled that area behind him, because it was probably close to 10 feet tall, straight-faced rock, and he dynamited because every time he did, any dust was on the beams over our work area, came flaking down on you. So I'm guessing they dynamited probably 30 to 60 times up there by remembering all the vibrations in our building and all the dust that came down. So they took away probably in the backside, close to 15-foot of rock out of there by blasting it apart, and on the front side, 10-foot, and then just pushed it over in the next area, like Mr. Parkin said, and made it filled dirt. I still think that we are, we have been offered 147 acres there in a very vulnerable area if we could connect a street between there and the end of Indian Hills, which is about 40th, and they said they would even accept a gravel road. But I was bolted down eight to one that we don't have a gravel road standard, and was even told that anybody that built there would take care of that. So I see that we have kind of a double statement here, that this place is more vulnerable than 100 feet away from it. It just shocks me on this, because I still think we ought to be accepting that 147 acres by putting in that gravel road that would go straight through the middle, or be on the picture up there, it would be on the left side. But if we built that, we would get 147 acres of very vulnerable property, so. I think it's appraised more than what it's worth, because I feel it is basically unbuildable. I think that Walmart takes all their water, puts it into a detention cell less than an eighth of a mile away from this thing, and it's a clay-lined detention cell. I think we could seal that up and not absolutely be asphalt, but we could do the same thing and probably protect it and still have a parking lot for people, too, so. To buy it and then fence it? No, I won't. So I'll decide something better. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Council Schuster?
I have a question.
Sure.
For Jeanine.
Okay. City Manager?
Thanks, Mayor. This is more of a procedural question that arose because of Council Schuster's comments. What is the process? Say this goes forward and we acquire the land, what is the process for how we decide to manage it? And how does council, how is council involved in that?
You may, Mayor, through you, if we receive a development proposal or plan for a property that's in the APO, is that your question? How do we process it?
More so the question of would we potentially create access there for the public, or would we just fence it, or would we try to accommodate? Like, how would those?
I think Council Schuster is saying if we're the owners, if we approve this and we're the owners, how is council involved in the management, creating access or not? That kind of stuff.
Well, you would be the owner of the property, and consequently, if we determine we want to build a parking lot there, you would need to basically approve that development, and then we would subject ourselves, as I said, to our own development review process, because it's in the aquifer protection overlay in your zoning structure. The APO requirements would be triggered, which is the SSI, and a peer-reviewed SSI, which we've already done to evaluate whether or not to purchase the property. Those SSI findings would be taken into account as staff evaluate the development proposal and the engineering that would occur on the site and would be ultimately recommended for approval based on the adopted Casper Aquifer Protection Plan and then municipal code as it pertains to the aquifer protection overlay, or they would be recommended for not approval, or recommended for stricter, as Darren said, engineering controls. And that is similar, like I said, to where we've had other parking lots built in APO areas. You know, the runoff, the sheeting off of that paved surface in an area like this would just put whatever runs off that parking lot. You could imagine that those, that could be directly into potentially the aquifer, depending on the lot. So staff evaluate that professional development, or excuse me, planning staff, engineering staff, Darren, et cetera. And council would be the submitter of the application, and I would assume you would want to be kept well apprised of whether we thought we could engineer sufficient controls to protect the aquifer or not.
Question.
Other questions, discussion?
I do have a follow-up.
And as far as dealing with the informal recreation that's happening there, what does that process look like? I remember you saying you've had internal conversations, but how will that?
Well, to be really honest with you, I suspect absent, you know, the use as it is right now is not permitted.
Right.
In an aquifer protection area. So we probably would want to immediately restrict that if we're going to be owners of it that comply with our own rules, right? And then immediately start assessing what a permanent, to Council Schuster's question, what a permanent and maybe properly protective of the aquifer kind of development might make sense. So, yeah. Yeah, I don't think it's off the table, but it's my opinion and recommendation to you that if we own property where we know there's, you know, an infringement upon our own rules, we immediately cease that and treat ourselves no different than we would treat any other developer.
Council Gabriel.
To tie on to that response, then, if this passes, will the City implement some kind of restriction fencing around that particular property? Will you come back to us for further advice?
I'd be happy to put that on your plate. Absolutely. Through you, Mayor. Yeah, I think, you know, what Darren and I have discussed at this point, we would probably recommend something like that in the short term until we have a more permanent solution. But if you would like that to be brought back to the council to ultimately make that call, I'm okay with that for sure. Yeah, makes sense.
Is there any other questions? Council Schuster?
It's not really a road, because it goes on the private property without their permission. Are you going to block off the road? Are you going, I mean, just block straight in front of it? Or are you going to block it so the dirt, two-lane, is still there?
Yeah, I honestly, Mayor, through you, no idea. No idea. We haven't gotten that far. We just know that the use that is informally occurring as a trespass right now is not permitted under the aquifer protection rules, and consequently, if we own it, then we wouldn't want to violate our own rules when we expect no one else to. So I honestly thought something as simple, Counselor, is, you know, we put up some barricades, no different than, I think there's a barricade at the end of Blount right now.
They're on the sides of it.
Yeah, yeah. I don't, you know, clearly I wouldn't recommend we put a lot of money into a temporary barrier, but it would be awkward to continue to allow a use that is not permissible, even if it's informal and really not authorized.
I just, I guess it brings up the point, if people are using this property now, and because of the use of this property, the way it's being used, there is a perceived danger to the aquifer, why are we allowing it to happen?
Well, Mayor, through you, because we don't own it right now. And to be candid with you, the owner is fairly absentee, not located in town. I'm not even sure if they're aware of it. I can tell you why I'm aware of it, because I've been walking my dogs up around there, and I see the cars parked. So I'm not sure that, you know, and because I've seen that, that's where these conversations have come from. Yeah, and to be candid, I don't know if the owner has attempted to restrict any kind of access there. It's just, you know, everyone in town kind of knows people are parking there informally.
So we have not identified the use of this property at this point in time as being a danger to the aquifer, because we haven't put any regulations? I mean, other pieces of property, we have regulations on what you can do on it and what you can't to protect the aquifer.
Well, in the aquifer protect, Mayor, through you, the aquifer protection overlay doesn't allow this kind of parking on bare ground. And I come back to what you see up here in that little county piece. The APO doesn't allow that, but the APO is a city regulatory mechanism. It doesn't apply, you know, our...
And this piece of property is in the county?
The piece of property where the cars are parking now on Grand is the county, but the property we're going to buy is within the city.
Oh, I'm talking, no, no, I'm talking this piece here.
Yeah, no, this is wholly within the city and within the aquifer protection overlays it.
Yeah, we cannot, right, it isn't, the use that's being used for now is not allowed, yet we cannot regulate it?
I guess what I would say is it is being used, but it's not being used by the owner that way. It's a trespass. The public are trespassing on the owner's property. So it's never been a permitted use by us or an approved development by us, if that makes sense. And I apologize, because I'm the one that used the word "use," which does imply the owner's complicit, right? But in this case, so far as I know, the owner has no knowledge of this trespass occurring.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Councilor Hanson?
Thank you. Just an observation, that we seem to be going in circles, because we have specialists who tells us this is a vulnerable area. Then, we want to discuss, I... That's at least what I heard, what we can do with this property after we purchase it. Why the heck would we purchase it if we want to do something with it to protect the aquifer? So I don't quite follow this discussion, which seems to be going in a circle. If it can be used for something, then let's not purchase it. Let somebody do something on it. But we've just been told by those folks who know that it ought to be protected for aquifer protection. And that is an area which, of course, I mean, I've been here a long time, which ought to concern us, because if that goes by the wayside, if that goes down the tubes, so to speak, or the river, then we are in trouble, because we'll have to build all kinds of fancy remediation equipment to clean up our water, which we don't have to do right now. So if we find, or our specialists find, that this is a special area which ought to be protected, we ought to protect it, put a fence around it, and leave it as it is. You know, I know the Walmart has, in the middle, has sort of a grate, and the water sinks down there and goes someplace else. Yeah, that's a possibility, but why endanger our clean air? I'm sorry, our clean water, not air.
Or air.
Okay. Air, maybe, too. Yeah, maybe, next. Thank you.
So we've had quite a bit of discussion here. I'm going to ask the public again if anybody has any public comments. Please come forward.
I know, I'm leaving it on. This is a covered topic. I'm Judy Snook, and typically, I'm just an observer, but this is an issue that is a concern regarding water and aquifer protection. And so I feel okay to not cover up my homemade badge. My concern is that we, like you all, take our... Have taken our dog up there and gone for a walk and never had a clue that we were trespassing. I mean, I did not know to whom this property belonged, or if it just belonged to everyone. It's sort of unknown, the great unknown. And I can see where the... If the city were to decide to purchase this property, it probably would come under more careful monitoring than it is now. And if it is just left as it is, if the decision is not to purchase this land, it makes it more vulnerable. That's my comment.
Thank you very much.
You're here.
Does anybody else have any public comment on this item? Okay, back to council for final discussion. Councilor Stoner?
Thanks, Mayor. I think when I think about this topic, my first priority is aquifer protection, so I plan on supporting this just because of the importance of it and the funds that we have. However, I do think that there is a high use, a high recreational use to this land, and I think the communication with the public is just going to be important. And if we can find a way to ultimately accommodate both of those things, and if they don't conflict with each other, then that's... Would be great. So I hope that staff can keep that in mind as we move forward if it's approved.
Councilor Plakus.
I guess... The aquifer protection, to me, is very, very important, okay? And in essence, we've dedicated a million dollars to try to find... To purchase land or to find... Try to find uses that we can protect the aquifer in a better way, particularly in Zones Two. My concern is, we really don't have a plan. It's first come, first served. It's whoever has land, and it happens to be unbuildable or very extremely difficult to build, and frankly, I believe this land is unbuildable. I don't believe the cost would ever pay out, particularly with the regulations that we have, to be able to build on it. And so you're going to take one-third, approximately, of your total cost and invest it in three acres of land. And the same issues we're talking about are throughout the whole Zone Two and all of Zone One. Yet there's been no analysis as to where's the best use of this money can be spent? Is this the best piece of property of everything that's vulnerable within our aquifer protection? Is this the most vulnerable piece? And is this the one we should be investing a third of our budget on? That's what I'm not getting for answers. What I'm getting for answers is, well, this particular person has approached the city and he has a piece of land, and it's basically a rock pile that can't be built on, therefore we should purchase it. And we did this earlier. To me, number one, develop a plan on where the most important parts are. Number two, figure out how to regulate the land, and I think we've done that. And I think what I heard from Darren is that if we... That we do have regulations in place that, one, make it probably impossible to build on, and, two, if in fact it does get built on, guess what? Our regulations work, and we can protect the aquifer. So right now, our only issue is, we have trespassing people that are parking cars that may leak oil or whatever antifreeze on the property. This is where I struggle with the whole thing, and this is what's difficult for me to say, are we going to spend a third of a million dollars on a piece of land, a very small piece of land, because someone has decided they want to sell it, because they can't do anything else with it? And we've decided that, well, it's available to us, let's buy it. Without identifying, is this the most important piece of land throughout the whole area that we should be investing our money in? I don't believe we've done that. Thank you.
So maybe I misunderstood Mr. Parkin, but I thought he said this was number one, like, this is it. I think, didn't I hear that? Or did I not hear that?
Mayor, if I could, I apologize, and Councilor Plakus, I want to offer this, because it may assuage at least part of your concern, and that is, we actually approached this owner. The owner did not come to us. Now, that is different, because as you know...
It is different.
In past aquifer acquisitions, it's been the other way around. Folks maybe started down the path of a development, realized that the financial feasibility was a little bit questionable because of aquifer protection and engineering design kinds of issues. In this case, we did approach this owner. They did not come to us. And we approached this owner, and this comes to your point, Councilor Pierce, because this is identified as our highest vulnerable property. And in part, not only because of the features there and proximity to the wells, but because of the development potential. The appraisal actually said for this parcel, unlike the previous one we approved, said that the highest and best use of this parcel was for commercial development, and the appraisal does acknowledge that about thirty-four percent of the land is going to be hard to develop because of probably rocks that need to be blasted through, but estimated that, based on financial feasibility, that's about seventy percent could potentially be developed, and the highest and best use was commercial development. So part of what is being assessed is the vulnerability of the land, but also the development potential. Like, is anyone really going to build there? Is it going to make sense for them to build there? And if so, then that brings it up in terms of priority for us. So we approached them. I just want to make sure we didn't have them calling me in the morning.
Thank you for that clarification.
I appreciate that information, and it does change my opinion on it because of that information.
Any other comments, Councilor Schuster?
They say this is number one, and after the presentation last week of Pilot Hill, and they showed where the actual water is going into the ground, I disagree with that. We're not contributing a dime to Pilot Hill, and he showed exactly where the water goes in the ground, and we're going to spend this money on this one.
Okay.
Other comments? So I'll add a few. I think that our city staff has worked extraordinarily hard to identify where we need to be spending our aquifer protection money. I think the voters approved money almost ten years ago to do this exact thing, and we need to spend it. We have the opportunity. We approached the owner. It's the number-one priority. We have to start somewhere, and we know the best way to protect the aquifer land is to acquire it. Now, I do agree with Councilor Stoner about the access. I'm a little concerned about the sudden violent change to the public and how that'll be received. I think education and communication is going to be very key, be very important, as well as working out alternatives, whether it's asking the school slash commercial space, if we can work out a deal to use their parking lot on the weekends, or if we can park on the street, or whatever that is, so we can accommodate access to the state land, at least on foot, and work on a longer-term plan. I think that's important, but I think we need to move ahead with the purchase. I would encourage all the council members to support it. City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Hanson.
Yes.
Plakus.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero no's, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. So it is eight fifteen. Before I ask Councilor Hanson for our motion to recess into executive session, I just want to let everybody know, we're going to take about a ten-minute break, and then the council will go downstairs. After we recess, we are coming back. This is, again, this is unusual for city council, so we will be back after executive session. You are welcome to hang out here, and then we will reconvene.
Can I suggest I make the motion now and say, we, in ten minutes, will recess to executive session?
Right. We're just going to recess to executive session, and I'm asking council to gather in ten minutes.
Good.
All right. Councilor Hanson.
I move to have the council recess to executive session in ten minutes downstairs and...
Regarding...
Regarding litigation, I think, whatever.
Second.
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Just to clarify, that is State Statute sixteen four, four oh five, A, sub three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, we are recessed to executive session. All right, welcome, everybody. We are reconvening the regular meeting of December eighteenth, twenty eighteen. It is nine oh eight PM. We are on item number eighteen, and I'll turn to the Vice Mayor.
Okay, I move to approve Option B, Resolution twenty eighteen dash sixty-nine B, authorizing one full-time equivalent fire division chief position and amending appropriations for the fiscal years twenty eighteen dash twenty twenty, biennial budget of the City of Laramie, Wyoming, and authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by Councilor McKinney. City Attorney, could you give us a relatively brief rundown of how we ended up here?
I will try, Your Honor. This regards a member of the Laramie Fire Department, Brett Vance. If you would like the longish version of events, and starting from the beginning?
Sure.
Okay.
So we're all clear?
In two thousand and ten, Mr. Vance, pursuant to random testing, tested positive for cocaine in his system. He was not terminated at that time. In two thousand and twelve, pursuant to random testing, he was found to have detectable traces of alcohol in his system while at work. He was tested twice that day. The first reading was point zero-two BAC, the second reading was point zero-one-six BAC. That was in late two thousand and twelve. Was given pre-termination, due process, and then the decision was made by the city to terminate his employee... Employment for that second violation of drug and alcohol, our drug and alcohol policy. As was his right, he appealed that termination decision of the city manager to the Civil Service Commission, which needs to approve such terminations. A hearing was held in early two thousand and thirteen in front of the Civil Service Commission. The Civil Service Commission, at that point, decided that they had the power to determine not just whether he could be fired or could not be fired, but could determine if there should be some middle-ground punishment. The Civil Service Commission then decided that they would not uphold a termination, but would... Or deny a termination, but would impose, I believe it was, a sixty-day suspension from duty without pay. Both the city and Mr. Vance appealed that determination of the Civil Service Commission to the district court. The district court here in Albany County, District Court Judge Denell, said that the Civil Service Commission did not have that power to find that middle-ground punishment, that under the Civil Service statute, the Civil Service Commission only had the power to uphold or deny the termination, and therefore sent it back to the Civil Service Commission. So in two thousand and fourteen, there was a second hearing in front of the Civil Service Commission. The Civil Service Commission decided after that hearing that, to use the statutory language, the termination of Mr. Vance was not sufficient and established. They determined that, in their estimation, the reliability of the blood alcohol content tests were not reliable, and therefore said that he could not be terminated. The city appealed that decision to the district court. Judge Denell heard that appeal and said that because the commission relied on irrelevant evidence and made findings not supported by the record, its ultimate decision to invalidate the test results was arbitrary, capricious, and abusive discretion, and otherwise not in accordance with law. Judge Denell therefore remanded it to the civil... Back to the Civil Service Commission and ordered them to accept and consider the results of the blood alcohol tests. That came back then for the third time in front of the Civil Service Commission in two thousand and fifteen, and the Civil Service Commission, then, once they accepted the blood alcohol content tests, said that the termination of Mr. Vance was therefore sufficient and established, and confirmed the termination of Mr. Vance. Mr. Vance appealed that decision to the Wyoming Supreme Court. And in that two thousand and fifteen decision, and in two thousand and sixteen, the Wyoming Supreme Court said that the city did not have the right to appeal the second decision to Judge Denell. Therefore, the Supreme Court had no jurisdiction to consider any of this, and that the second decision of the Civil Service Commission therefore stood. That second decision was the decision where the Civil Service Commission had determined that the blood alcohol content tests were unreliable. So in November two thousand and sixteen, the Supreme Court said that the city then, apparently in the position that the termination had not been effective, began to examine the situation of Mr. Vance, because Mr. Vance had, and I can't remember the exact date, but certainly a year or two earlier in that range, had voluntarily quit his position at the fire department, and we thought had taken a retirement. When I say the city "thought," it's because you're not entitled to that information from the Wyoming retirement system. We knew he'd quit, but hadn't sure if he had retired. So we began the process in late two thousand and sixteen and into early two thousand and seventeen to have Mr. Vance go through the qualification process to come back to the Laramie Fire Department. the qualification process to come back to the Laramie Fire Department. At some point in there, we did learn that Mr. Vance had voluntarily retired and was taking his retirement. We informed Mr. Vance that we're stopping this process, you had retired. We did not hear further from Mr. Vance until he, on that topic, until he filed a lawsuit in late summer of last year, 2017. That lawsuit has been pending ever since, and it pins now. Finally, in discussions between our litigation counsel and Mr. Vance's attorney, as I understand it, Mr. Vance finally said, "I want to un-retire," to use a non-legal term, "and come back to work." And so, we, again, in early November of this year, started the process, determined that he met the qualifications to come back to work, and I can't remember the day, whether it was November 19th or November 20th, we brought him back to work. With litigation still pending about, well, various things, but I guess largely back pay for this ensuing time. So, that brings us to where we are today, and I may get the both budget or fire department language wrong, and I'll take the correction of city manager or Chief Johnson, but what's before you today is now we, and now the city council is faced with a decision. We have X amount of money budgeted for our fire department, and then we have X number of full-time equivalent positions in the fire department, and they are separated by We are bringing, Mr. Vance, have to bring him back at his old rank, which is the top rank under chief. That could lead to a, if his position is not funded, that can lead to several demotions as his rank is overstaffed, one has to be demoted out of there, and a cascade effect that can be described in more detail by the chief, by the fire chief, or by the city manager. So, that is the factual basis for why we are here tonight. Do you have any questions about that?
Does anybody have any questions right now for the city attorney? Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
City manager, would you like to add anything?
Mayor, I don't believe so. I think that the cover sheet and the language of the resolution on the floor are pretty clear. I'm happy to answer any questions, though, if you'd like clarity on any of those elements of the resolution.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the city manager right now? Okay, and for the public's clarification, if you're looking at the cover sheet, there are two motions on the cover sheet. One of them adds a full-time equivalent firefighter position, that is Option A. Option B adds a full-time equivalent fire division chief. And right now, we have on the floor the fire division chief position being added. So, no other staff comments? Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to council for any discussion. Counselor Schuster?
It's sad that this has happened. We have went from one court to another court to another court, back to this one, back to there, and the people that are going to pay for this, depending on which one passes, will it be firefighters or the citizens of Laramie to have to come up with the additional funds? So, it's one of these where we're damned if we go one way, and we're damned if we go the other way, because somebody's going to be upset at us, no matter what happens here tonight. And this is, this is one of those times where, who are you going to disappoint? No matter what we do, somebody's going to be disappointed.
Any other comments or discussion? Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one clarification question. The Civil Service Commission only authorized how many fire division chief positions? Or do they have an authority to do that? I was unclear on that, because we talked about the number...
Honorable Mayor, Counselor Hanson, the Civil Service Commission classifies our positions. The city council authorizes the FTEs within the positions.
So, the Civil Service Commission has nothing to do with... Thank you. That was, I just wanted to clarify that, because I understood our attorney to say that there was an authorization. No, that's not the case. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Gabriel?
Thank you, Mayor. We learned tonight that there's the possibility that things have changed since...
Counselor Gabriel, I have to stop you right there.
Have a...
You cannot divulge executive session material. I'm sorry.
Well...
We are restricted in terms of what we can comment on personnel and litigation. So, this is a public meeting, and I have to restrict that.
Actually, I talked to this... Okay.
I think it'd be proper if Counselor Gabriel wished to ask a question about current status of matters here in public meeting.
Okay. Counselor Gabriel, would you like to...
Rephrase?
Rephrase and ask a question?
Yes, let me rephrase the question. For Chief Johnson, could I ask you a question, please? Have you learned the possibility of resignation or two in your department that could be coming in January?
Honorable Mayor, Counselor Gabriel, members of council, I've been informed that we've had two members receive conditional job offers at another department, so they have a process to go through, so no resignations have been tendered, but we will have movement in our department if those come through, so... And I just learned that in the last couple days, so...
Dan, can you clarify what rank those pending conditional offers would free up?
Firefighter rank.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have another question?
Ah...
I wanted to make everybody a chance, if you have a motion, I want to make sure everybody has a chance to speak first.
Another, just a comment later.
Okay, okay.
Go ahead.
Well, you can have a comment now.
Okay, let me have a comment. So, in light of the situation that I learned tonight, I know we wanted to all wrap this up before the new council came on next year, but I think things have changed a little bit. We don't know for sure whether or not these firefighters will be approved at other job opportunities, and so I would think maybe a postponement would be in order, and we can kind of see where things fall out in mid to late January with the new council. That's kind of where I'm coming from right now.
City manager, for the clarification of the discussion, or fire chief, can you clarify if we postpone this decision, those demotions will still have to happen?
Yes, they will.
Yes.
They will still have to happen, because they will only, even if they leave, they'll only clear out firefighter positions. We have four. Right now, we have five division chiefs. We're only authorized to have four. We would still have to send, we would still have to demote those people. So, am I speaking correctly? I want to be clear for the public.
Honorable Mayor, Counselor Gabriel, the vacancies, if we have any free up due to those conditional job offers, it would be at firefighter. We are not authorized under FTEs for five division chiefs. There's obviously money savings at the one end, if you have vacancies, so I guess I'm not prepared to answer that question and how we would carry that. I would, at some point, run out of budgetary money during the spring if we fill those firefighter vacancies.
City manager.
Mayor and council, I think the chief answered it correctly. The firefighter vacancies that could accrue to us over time due to the recent pending resignations, we think, would be in the lowest rank, but it would not solve the dilemma of having currently five division chiefs in our department when we are only authorized for four. And so, the demotions, as we understand civil service rules, would still have to ensue if we don't fund a division chief position. What would happen is the demotions would occur at the top level of division chief, with the most recently hired DC demoted to free that position up for Mr. Vance, and then that sequential demotions occurring down through the ranks. Now, where we would receive a benefit is when we get to the lowest rank of firefighter, we wouldn't have to lay off a firefighter, because we have vacant positions in the firefighter rank. Does that help explain that?
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Polikas?
So, if we authorize additional division chief and unauthorized a firefighter, or two firefighters, do we have that ability to do that as a council, or is that beyond our purview?
Counsel, our understanding of the statute is you authorize the total number of FTEs in this organization. So, if your question, Counselor Polikas, is can we authorize another position in the fire department? Yes, but...
Unauthorized.
Well, but let me say this. This council, as a governing body, never gets into that level of detail of saying, "Well, we're going to authorize a firefighter as opposed to a division chief." Those are decisions of management, and then the Civil Service Commission classifies them. So, right now, what you have on the books is you've authorized 48 total departmental? I always have to look at you, because we've changed it. Let's just say it's 48. It's around 48. FTEs in the fire department. Management then recommends rank, Civil Service Commission classifies them accordingly, based on the needs and the activities of the department. So, could you do that? Yes. Would I advise you to do that? I recommend you to get to that level of detail? No. I mean, that's why you have managers, and that's why we have civil service statutes that guide these things.
I guess I'm a little confused, because we aren't being asked to get to that level of detail from the standpoint of authorizing additional position.
Yeah.
But not, not on the lower end of things.
Right. Maybe, let me make a clarification, because maybe, you know, the way that we phrase the budget amendment that is actually your motion on the floor tonight has misled you into sort of these areas that really, I don't believe are prudent for you to spend your time in. The reason we identified that Resolution B is a division chief position was to substantiate to you the cost of that budget amendment. Really, all the amendment is doing is putting $127,000 of additional funding into the budget and authorizing one FTE. It's your management and the Civil Service Commission that determine that's a division chief. But we said division chief, because we wanted you to understand that $127,000 a year is a significant salary plus benefits, and we didn't want you thinking we were paying, you know, entry-level staff that amount. So, division, you're authorizing, if you look at the resolution, you're authorizing a position. I tell you in the language of the resolution, it will be a division chief, and I give you the amount. And the reason I tell you what the position is, is to substantiate the validity of the amount.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Counselor McKinney?
Yes. If the other, if we do be...
Option, Resolution.
Resolution B, then no demotions.
Correct. Counsel, as we understand it, mayor through you, Counselor McKinney, the Civil Service Commission, decision two, as the attorney said, stands. It requires the reinstatement of a division chief. We currently don't have that position available, so they would have to demote to free it up, or the alternative, if you fund, you provide funding for that additional position. If you fund the position and approve Resolution B, there will be no need to go to the Civil Service Commission for them to affect demotions.
Any other questions? Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to clarify, Mr. Vance has to be hired at the same level, of course, that he was in before. There is no, I mean, we keep on talking about demotions, but that doesn't apply in this particular case.
City Attorney?
He was terminated from a particular position. His termination, after all the courts were done with it, was rejected, and so therefore...
It's the same position.
Correct.
Correct. I just wanted to clarify that, because we kept on talking about demotions, but it doesn't apply here. Thank you.
Any other questions? So, I'm going to make a few comments, and then I'll open it up. So, I, so for all the firefighters that are sitting in the room, this has been a very difficult situation for the council, for the city, and especially for all firefighters that work for us tremendously. It has been stressful on everybody, and I can't tell you enough that I have thought about that every day, that this conversation has to come up. We've been in litigation with Mr. Vance for a very long time, and so you have my heartfelt apologies. Most of you, or all of you, sitting in this room, I don't know everybody's exact job title, but are innocent bystanders in this entire situation. So, we have a couple of options here as a city council, and one of them is to go through the process that is laid out through the Civil Service Commission and State Statute. Our hands are somewhat tied, as I know many of you are aware, because State Statute governs Civil Service Commission rules. It's a little bit, it's a lot different than the rest of the city departments. So, that process would send us back to the Civil Service to perform those demotions. I will tell you right now, although that is an option, in my estimation, it serves the city very poorly. I cannot stress that punishing the innocent firefighters who would receive demotions would destroy morale and not serve this community well. I am always in favor of trying to support our public safety as much as we possibly can for the work that you do. I also believe wholeheartedly that an investment in the fire department, whether we came up with it on our own, or were here by circumstances not of our own choosing, is not a bad thing, and the community will benefit from the additional expertise and services that I know that everybody in the department will provide. So, it is, it is my recommendation and suggestion to the council members that we approve the motion that is on the table. We fund the fire division chief position, and we thank the firefighters for their patience through this entire, this very stressful time, and I also, I want to extend that to your families as well, because I know this has not been easy on anybody's family either. Are there any, and I also want to apologize, because of the pending litigation and the personnel matters, we are very limited in what we can say in public. So, is there any other council members that would like to make comments? Counselor Stoner?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to echo your comments. Thank you all for what you do. I think this is an incredibly difficult situation, and when I look at the options, I want to choose the one that seems the most fair. And to me, that's the path that does not include a requirement of demotion, so I'm also going to be supporting the motion on the floor.
Are there any other council members that wish to make comments at this time? All right. City Clerk, can you do roll call on the motion that's on the floor? And just a reminder, it is Option B, authorizing one full-time equivalent fire division chief position, essentially the money for that position.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
No.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. That motion passes. So, I'm sure most of you would like to go home, sort back to your duties, but I want to let you know, now that we're through this, there is cake out there, as we were celebrating council...
Please eat it.
Council service requirements. We will find some extra forks. We would all appreciate it if you would eat some cake on your way out the door, and thank you, guys, for joining us tonight. Next, we've got two other quick items to get through. Number 19, public comments on non-agenda items. Do you have any public comments on non-agenda items tonight? Okay?
I have one. Can I make it?
No. Are you public?
I am public. I'm an elected public official.
What is your comment, Counselor Schuster?
We had wreaths across America, where we put them on veterans' graves. The fire department showed up and had a speaker there, who's an ex-military person. We put out 640 wreaths. We had 1,800 sites, so we could accommodate them all. So, I was happy to see the fire department was there. I'd say I was the only city councilman there, and... department was there. I'd say I was the only city councilman there, and we had probably 50 volunteers, I would say, in total. So, thanks, them.
Thank you for sharing. All right, item number 20, consideration of future council work session topics. For the outgoing council, I have a four, or for the new council, I have a four-page list. Does anybody have any suggestions to put on the council? Okay, I'll turn in my list later. All right, item number 21, for this final time, Counselor Hanson.
I move that council adjourned, finally.
We have a second.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor and Counselor Stoner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? We are adjourned.